Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, to those here with us tonight and those online. And I'd like to call the September 6th, 2022, meeting of the San Carlos City Planning Commission to order. We always start our agenda with Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd rise and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
And can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Roof is excused, absent this evening, so I wanted to note that for the record. Commissioner Garvey.
Present.
Vice Chair Clements.
Present.
And Chair Yakapony.
Present. So for those who are online, I think will help you follow along. If you have comments or questions, we'll call you in at the right time. And for those of you who are here, we do have a procedure. If you'd like to make a comment, there are comment forms in the back table. And if you've not, you could fill one out if you want to say something, and please hand them to staff, okay? Thank you. The first item on tonight's agenda is our public comment. Public comment is a period for members of the community to bring forward any topic that is not on tonight's agenda. If you would like to, as I said, if you would like to make a comment, please fill out the speaker form. And for those online, you can raise your hand with the icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if you're joining by phone, you can press star nine and then star six to unmute when you are called upon. So with that, do we have anyone who would like to make a public comment at this time?
At this point, there is no one.
Okay. Thank you, Lynette. And here in the room? No? Okay. Very good. All right. Next item. So we have the approval of the minutes from our last planning commission meeting of August 1st. Do my colleagues have any comments or amendments they'd like to make? Yes. Commissioner Clements.
Yes, Chair. Thank you. I think there are just a couple of fairly cosmetic changes on item 5A, packet page five. And 5B, I think the motions meant to exclude the words entertain. So it should read, you know, Clements, Garvey made a motion or moved to approve and seconded the minutes rather than entertain the motion, which is the acceptance of that. So noted. We'll go ahead and make that change. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. And similarly cosmetic on packet page eight, the motion near the top of the page, Clements, Garvey, there's missing a verb, should say moved to close the public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. One last chance? No? Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the minutes.
Yes. So moved to adopt the minutes with the suggested amendments.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Yakapony?
Yes. Very good. Thank you. So we have one agenda item tonight, and we're now entering into the public hearing period. And that agenda item is for 1100 Industrial Road. The procedure for the public hearing is that staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera. On the application, followed with the staff's recommendations, applicant will make a presentation if they'd like to thereafter. Interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public item, hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those items you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers, please, should state their name prior to addressing the commission because this will help staff in preparing the minutes. So with that, tonight's item, request for conditional use permit for professional medical office for physical therapy services and a conditional use permit for instructional services for a private fitness studio. And I think we have a staff presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Megan Rittlesberger, Assistant Planner. Here with the City of San Carlos. There we go. And the items before you tonight are two requests, a request for a conditional use permit for a physical therapy office and a conditional use permit for a private fitness studio. These are two separate requests, and there will be two separate motions, but we're doing one application as these are going in the same space. Some project background. The project site is located within a planned development district, which is governed by the provisions of ordinance 988 and amended by a 2007 parking agreement. Suite 11 is the subject suite, and it's comprised of three spaces. 11 is contract services. 11A is an existing physical therapy use. And 11B, the subject unit, is a proposed physical therapy and Pilates studio. This slide shows the existing conditions. The site is within the San Carlos Industrial Park, which is bounded by the red lines on this slide. The highlighted yellow building on the far left in the industrial park is the subject building, and the star indicates where Suite 11 is located, facing Industrial Road and building number three. This slide shows the surrounding zoning designations, which all contain general commercial, industrial types of uses, including all of the planned development surrounding. This slide shows the floor plan for Suite 11B. The area highlighted in yellow denotes the entry area and the bathroom. The area highlighted in blue denotes the proposed Pilates private fitness studio. And on the far right, highlighted in red, is the 200-square-foot treatment room for the physical therapy office. Applicant Caroline Palmer is a physical therapist treating patients ages 15 and up. She proposes to treat four to five patients per day with one-hour appointments, and the proposed hours are Monday through Friday, 6:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. This use would be located in the 200-square-foot treatment room on the far right of the floor plan I showed a moment ago. The physical therapy is classified in the zoning code as a professional or medical office, and a CUP is required per ordinance 988 for professional or medical offices in this building. We must demonstrate that the office uses in the building do not account for more than 45% of Building 4, and the entire 200-square-foot, single-patient treatment room will be counted as office for the purpose of determining if this request complies. Applicant Allison Gonzalez proposes to operate a private fitness studio in the 600-square-foot area in 11B. The private fitness studio will be providing private and duet Pilates and gyrotonic exercise training. No group classes will be offered, and no amplified music or sound is proposed to be used. The proposed business hours will be by appointment only and will be operating daily, 8:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The fitness studio is classified as an instructional services use. A CUP is required for instructional service uses as well, per ordinance 988. There are not any specific requirements for granting a conditional use permit for instructional services in this building, except that we should be achieving a diverse mix of uses in Building 4. And this slide demonstrates both the diverse mix of uses in this building and that the proposal will not exceed 45% of the building for office space. So if you look at this breakdown of all of the uses in the building, you'll see in row 11B where the proposed uses will go, that the total square footage dedicated to these uses is 800 square feet, and only 200 will be counted as office, resulting in a 1.6% addition to the total percentage of office in the building or resulting in a 16% total dedication of office space in the building, which is well under the 45% allowed by this planned development ordinance. The proposed uses otherwise meet the required findings for conditional use permits as outlined in the staff report. This slide shows the 2007 parking agreement plan. This parking agreement is a unique one in the city. It's the only one we're aware of in a city like this. It allocates parking spaces regardless of use to each unit. So 24 spaces were allocated to Unit 11 in this parking agreement, and 11A was allocated 15 spaces when we granted the CUP in 2015 for Apex Physical Therapy. So this leaves nine spaces to be split between Units 11 and 11B. And staff is confident that this is enough, this is plenty of spaces for these uses. There are also visitor spaces located throughout the parking plan to accommodate for any additional guests if needed. A public notice was published on August 22nd, 2022, and mailed to all property owners and occupants within 300 feet of the site on August 23rd, 2022. The city has received no comments. This project was exempt from the provisions of SEQA per section 15301 for existing facilities. And these are the motions, should you choose to accept them. And again, they're separate motions, one for each request. And staff is here if you have any questions, and the applicants are also here if you'd like to hear a few words from them or have any questions of them.
Thank you, Megan. So first to my colleagues, clarifying questions on the facts or the points of code? Commissioner Garvey?
Just one question. Can you go over the parking again? So there's nine spaces for 11 and 11B?
Yes.
And those can be apportioned out anyway?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And the most conservative estimate we have for the number of spaces that 11B could possibly need at any time is five, and that's if both instructors are driving and if a duet appointment were to bring two separate vehicles as well.
Okay. Yeah, I did see that the physical therapist was considering walking or biking to work every day, which was a great idea and a great example. But, okay, thanks for the clarification on parking.
I have a clarifying question.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Chair. This refers to the CUP and the fact that the businesses need to obtain a business license. And so I'm just wondering about the city's compliance work? Is there some kind of curriculum where you go through CUPs and check that, you know, every so often that all the conditions are conformed to?
Not that I'm aware of, but I'd like to let Lisa chime in if she has any historic knowledge.
Yes, certainly with new development projects, you know, new development, right? It's very easy to kind of go through all the conditions of approval. A lot of them are development-related, specific, right? Specifically related to the development. For something like a conditional use permit, for example, if there's requirements that certain hours be kept or limited in some way, usually we don't really go back to double-check, you know, like maybe if there's signage posted or go to the website. Usually we would hear, I'm just using this as an example, if the hours, you know, aren't kept or expanded, usually through word of mouth, or if there's a situation happening with the parking or the particular operation, it allows us to review those conditions of approval and then make contact with an applicant or business operator and give them an opportunity to come into compliance with all conditional use permits. All of them are eligible and codified in our ordinance to be brought back to the planning commission, and it can be revoked if the conditions are not adhered to. So that's spelt out in our zoning ordinance. So that's one way that we can address conditions of approval that aren't complied with.
Right. But for something that, just to follow up on that, would the city issuing a business license, that would be the city that would know if the business license was issued or not? So is the sequence of the CUP be granted and then the license be granted whenever later on? But no one would really track in case that was never done?
When we are processing business registrations, a zoning clearance is routed to planning, and we have to look and see if there's a CUP or any other entitlements for that address before we're able to grant it, which is how this one came up. Our applicants tried to just apply for their business registration, follow their due diligence, and then found out, well, there's a pretty strange ordinance on file for this site, so we'll need to go through a CUP process.
Got it. So it's the business license procedure that makes, that ends up checking that the CUP conditions are met in a way?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think, Megan, we're good for right the moment. I guess ask if our applicants...
I just had one addition.
Oh, yeah, no, sorry.
So following up on that, what if the applicant, after a year, wanted to do business on Saturday? Would they have to come back to the planning commission, or is that ministerial enough, or you could say, yeah, that's okay?
If it is not spelled out in the CUP, my understanding is we would need to bring it back, even just for simple hour changes.
Okay. Thank you.
Do our applicants want to make a presentation, make a statement?
Do you have questions for us?
And are there questions of my colleagues for the applicants?
No.
I don't have any either. So maybe we'll then say, okay, let's open it up for public comment, and we'll first see if there's anyone on the line who has a question or a comment that they'd like to make. Lynette, are there any callers?
We don't have any public comment at this point.
Very good. Then I think I would entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I'll move that we close the public comment period.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Yakapony?
Yes. Very good. So comments from colleagues? What are your thoughts?
In general, the request seems pretty pro forma, very much in line with the uses that are allowed in this space. All the findings seem to be made very easily about the proportions of uses and the fact that it's a very small operation, the parking, it's way overparked, you know, like there don't seem to be any challenges. There's no music, there's no, it just seems to be very simple and easy. Actually, my only thought is, like, per Ellen's, Commissioner Garvey's, last comment, which is just in case that future hours wanted to change, you know, is this flexible enough? But it's your application, so that's not mine to second guess. But this seems to be pretty simple.
Thank you. Commissioner Garvey?
Thank you, Chair. Yakapony, I too like this project and think it meets all of the findings. One of the things I like about this project and the location is I think the project contributes to the diverse mix of uses that are intended for this space, and it's nice to see that this kind of use will be moving in, and I'm supportive of the project.
Thank you very much. And I think for my part, I would agree with both of you, expansion of the uses in the area. And I always appreciate when individuals, entrepreneurs, want to bring their vocation into a business and do it here in San Carlos, so it's a great thing to see. So I also would support the project. So maybe with that, I think we have two motions, and I think we should take, and if I understand it correctly, vote on them in turn. So if either of my colleagues want to make a first motion?
I move that the planning commission approve the request of Caroline Palmer for a conditional use permit to allow an office use at 1100 Industrial Road, Suite 11B, APN 112-420-110, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report and as conditioned in the conditional use permit.
I'd like to second the motion.
A roll call, please.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Yakapony?
Yes. Thank you. Congratulations. And second motion?
Yes, I'd love to make a motion. I'd like to move that the planning commission approve the request of Allison Gonzalez for a conditional use permit to allow an instructional services use at 1100 Industrial Road, Suite 11B, APN 112-420-110, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report and as conditioned in the conditional use permit.
I'm a second. I will second.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Yakapony?
Yes. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good luck in setting up your businesses. So for our next agenda item, number seven, reports, correspondence, and general information. Lisa?
Thank you, Chair. This evening, I do not have any reports on recent city council actions. Nothing for this evening.
Thank you. And 7B, planning commission comments or reports. Do any of my colleagues have anything they'd like to bring forward?
Well, I'd like to congratulate Lisa and the planning team for posting a draft housing element on the 30th of August, if I'm not mistaken. Congratulations. I know what a huge lift that is and was, and will continue to be. So looking forward to our study session, which I believe is in the next meeting, correct?
Thank you, Vice Chair Clements. I really appreciate that. It is a big lift, but it, like you said, it's just the beginning.
Thank you, Vice Chair. No, do you, more? You have another point? Please.
I had just one question, which was, I had in my notes from a previous meeting something about the timing for an SB 9 ordinance this summer or September, and wondered if there was an update on that.
I think I can go ahead and address that in item D. I have a couple items, so I'll just jot down a little note for that.
Thank you. None from me. Well, I guess I should ask staff, will we be touching on the housing element in our next, and what to expect at our next meeting in D? Good. Nothing else from me. Correspondence?
Nothing from staff this evening. Thank you.
Very good. So that brings us to item D.
Okay. There's quite a bit of activity going on, so I thought to create a whole slide just for this. So as Vice Chair Clements mentioned, for anyone who's watching at home or here this evening, a public draft housing element that is going to be setting forth goals and policies to address our housing needs over the next eight years is now out and available for review. You can find this on the project website at www.sancarlos2040.org. Copies are also available here at the Civic Center, inside City Hall, near the Development Services counter. We have a copy at the ACC Adult Community Center, and also several copies at the San Carlos Library. So if anybody is interested in looking at those, please feel free. We do have two study sessions planned for, where we can dive in much more deeply into this document with a staff and consultant presentation. The first study session is with the planning commission, and that's scheduled for September the 19th. And then we also have a study session with the city council on September 26th, which is the following Monday. Both meetings start at 7:00 p.m. Staff and the consultant team are working together and putting together a presentation so that we can be, have a more focused meeting or have a meeting where it's clear what we're asking of the commission. I will share that the document has a lot of data in it. It can be very dense, that might be one way to describe it, but for some folks out there, you know, the data is like the most interesting part. I would say that probably the best place to put your attention on is Section 2 within the draft housing element, which has the draft goals, policies, and action items or programs that are proposed for the city. In addition to that, the other area to be aware of is some significant changes happening to the zoning ordinance. There is an action item in the housing element itself, under Section 2, where those goals and policies are located, an action item that directs the city to update certain, the densities of certain zoning districts. And I think this will be important for the decision-makers and the public to be aware of in terms of how the city is actually going to accommodate the growth in housing, what changes need to be made to the zoning ordinance. So I would definitely want to draw your attention there. We did have workshops with the community to arrive at a density and height maximum that they felt comfortable with, or at least that was communicated to the staff and consultant team at the time. So this will be, these will be important parts of the study session that we'll look I don't have anything else to add now at this time, so we're still kind of strategizing the best way to lay all of that out. It's a large document. But what I can do is provide some correspondence to the commission if there's any further development on how we're going to be presenting that to the commission, so stay tuned for that. The other item I wanted to provide an update to the commission on is regarding the dissolution of the Transportation and Circulation Commission. I had sent some correspondence to the planning commission, I don't know, maybe a month ago. It's been, time flies. But given that the Transportation and Circulation Commission has, will no longer exist here at the City of San Carlos, and the roles and responsibilities and duties of that commission are now assigned, per council direction, to the planning commission, we will have a future item on the commission agenda where the Public Works Director and the city engineer will both come to introduce themselves, and we can talk about the roles and responsibilities. My understanding is that right now, there's not any kind of large work program where there's items that need to come forward to the commission, but staff will be working closely with our Public Works Director and city engineer so that when items are ripe to come before the commission, we can give an advance notice in our regular communications. So that will happen on October 3rd, where the Public Works Director and our city engineer will attend, and we can have discussion and answer questions from the commission regarding that. Some of you may know that we recently held our first community workshop on the Downtown Specific Plan Project, and that was last Wednesday, August 31st. The recording is available, and my understanding, it should be up on the website probably tomorrow or by tomorrow evening at the latest. So anyone interested in watching the playback of that, feel free to go to sancarlosdowntownplan.com, and you can find access to that recording. In other news, as I mentioned, maybe through email communications, the city council appointed a new commissioner, Janet Castaneda. She will be joining the planning commission meeting. Her first meeting will be September 19th. I will be meeting with Commissioner Castaneda to give her an update on the housing element. Kind of a little bit of a big download there, but we want to make sure she's prepped for the meeting and at least kind of understands where we've been in the process and what's before the city at this time. So she will be joining us on the 19th. And I would like to provide an opportunity for commissioners to meet Janet through a meet and greet, which we could schedule like a half an hour before. before the meeting time, have a couple of refreshments, meet in the collaboration room just to say hello before she takes her seat here on the dais. So more information coming on that. Another follow-up, I had previously communicated to the Commission that, given all of the long-range planning initiatives that we have under our work program, both the Community Development Director and I thought it would be a great idea to establish Planning Commission subcommittees, similar to what the City Council does, in terms of establishing two members to meet with staff informally, where we, there wouldn't be any standing meetings, we would just reach out and say, "We have an update, or we'd like to run something by you on this particular item or project," and the subcommittees would be established. So we want to wait until the full Commission is seated to give everybody an equal opportunity to think about what subcommittees they may want to be on. And we will have subcommittees for housing, for the downtown, for the upcoming northeast specific plan project, and we also want to create a subcommittee for large developments. And then speaking of large developments, such as the pending project at 808 Alameda de las Pulgas, I think it's 87 townhomes, last time I remember, and also the Alexandria project, for example, these would be, you know, classified as the larger development applications. We want to establish a subcommittee for those as well. And I did have a chance to talk to the project planner for these applications, and she will be providing individual sheets on status updates of each of those projects, and those will be available in your packet on September the 19th. And if there's any follow-up on that, and if Commissioners would like to meet with staff or the project planner separately, we can definitely schedule some time to do that. And then I guess the last item, as you had requested, Chair Yakapony, was, had to do with SB9. And I don't have much details to share, other than, you're right, it was supposed to come back, but that has been postponed a little bit. I know there's some work going on with that, and I know that the principal planner, I don't know, Megan, if you know anything about that, maybe you want to come and give up an update. But I do know that, given that the ordinance is set to expire, I think at the end of the year, it will be brought back. There might be a little bit of a gap by the time it gets brought back to the Commission and gets adopted, but there won't be too much of a gap. And my understanding is that there hasn't been any SB9 applications made to the city, maybe with the exception of one. Megan, would you like to come up? Megan is in current planning, and she has meetings every week on this, so thanks, Megan, for what you can share.
You have the most updates that I do, out of what the status of the permanent ordinance is, but as far as applications, just so you guys know, we have one that has officially been filed. It's for a conversion of two already existing structures to make them legalized, so we will have one SB9 unit and one ADU, which was already allowed. So this is allowing us to further add an additional unit to the site.
Thank you, Megan. And with that, that's, I think that concludes my updates for this evening.
Chair, may I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah, Vice Chair.
Thanks. Lisa, with the, I think you said, one of the subcommittees would be on large developments? What would the function of that be, of that subcommittee?
This is in response to, I guess, some requests that the Commission be updated on the status of the large development applications, as opposed to just receiving the full packet, you know, with the EIR and everything, coming to the Commission for the first time. So this would give us an opportunity, if there was something to share, to at least have the ability to reach out to a two-subcommittee group, as, you know, part of the Planning Commission. And that group could also provide any kind of updates or share any perspectives with the full Commission during your update portion of this agenda. So I don't really have, like, a specific, you know, example to give, but because the projects are some of the largest, you know, that we're seeing right now, we felt it would be a good idea to at least be able to respond to the Commission's request, to kind of follow along those projects a little bit more closely. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. That was quite a list of updates. Thank you for that detail, and I know, for my part, and I'm sure my colleagues agree, that it's good to be with you and thinking ahead for the matters that will be coming up. And while we might not have the content, be good, it's always good to be thinking about how will we approach the material so that we can put our mind to the right topic. So thanks for getting us going.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, comments from fellow Commissioners, staff? Okay, maybe in record time, I would call the, this meeting adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.